All set?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the special city council meeting regarding polling places and voting. The city council will convene on Thursday, July 2nd, 2020 at 6:00 PM to hold a special meeting for the purpose of discussion, any and all business via remote participation in accordance with Chapter 40A of the Massachusetts General Laws and Governor Baker's an emergency order date March 12th, 2020. In accordance with Governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the city council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. The meeting will be televised via PBD Access Television. The meeting is being held via the Zoom format. If we'll now please stand for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Now for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to what stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty- Liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you, everybody, for attending this special meeting. These unprecedented circumstances that we're dealing with regarding the pandemic and as well as the edicts that are coming down from the state. At this time, I'll turn it over to Allison Danforth regarding the process that she's come up with and the steps that got us to this place as of right now. City Clerk Allison Danforth.
Thank you, Councilor. Good evening. I appear this evening to request a change in the polling locations for the 2020 elections. As you all know, due to COVID-19, we have all changed how we do business, and elections is no different. After reviewing all of our current polling locations, we realized that we could not do business as usual in many of them. Because residents of Brooksy Village, which are in Ward 43A, are the only voters voting in the McIntosh Building, we are not looking to change this polling location. Examples of locations that have challenges are Aviv and Ward 12, which is a rehab nursing home that we cannot use this year. We have many smaller polling locations, such as Cavalry Baptist Church, Wilson Terrace, and Spinst Farm, that we will not be able to achieve the social distancing necessary to keep poll workers and voters safe. We also have two precincts at St. Anne's, which uses one door for access and egress. Due to these many concerns and after careful consideration, I submitted a request to change our polling locations to encompass the Higgins Middle School for Wards 1 and 2, the Turidian Senior Center for Wards 3 and 4, and the PBD Veterans Memorial High School for Wards 5 and 6. Since my original request, I have received feedback that there is a preference for polling locations in each ward. Today, I've submitted a revision to the council as a late communication, which is based on that feedback and information I have received. The state legislature will vote to allow cities and towns to eliminate the need for checkout tables, which will allow for a smaller footprint for each precinct. This morning, Tim Spano and I, with the help of Facilities Director Jim Hasty, assessed a number of schools, and after measuring each precinct's space needs to meet COVID-19 social distancing guidelines, I recommend that the council approve the following polling locations for the 2020 state and general elections. Ward 1, Precinct 1, Brown School Gym. Ward 2, 1, Precinct 2, Brown School Cafeteria. Ward 1, Precinct 3, Brown School Gym. Ward 2, Precinct 1, Welch School Gym. Ward 2, Precinct 2, Welch School Gym. Ward 2, Precinct 3, Welch School Cafeteria. Ward 3, Precinct 1, Senior Center. Ward 3, Precinct 2, Senior Center. Ward 3, Precinct 3, Senior Center. Ward 4, Precinct 1, Higgins Middle School Gym. Ward 4, Precinct 2, Higgins Middle School Gym. Ward 4, Precinct 3, Higgins Middle School Cafeteria. That should say gym as well. Ward 43A will stay the same as Brooksy Village. Ward 5, Precinct 1, PBD High School Fieldhouse. Ward 5, Precinct 2, PBD High School Fieldhouse. Ward 5, Precinct 3, PBD High School Fieldhouse. Ward 6, Precinct 1, Burke School Cafeteria. Ward 6, Precinct 2, Burke School Gym. Ward 6, Precinct 3, Burke School Gym. I'm available for any questions. Also available are the Board of Registrers, Bill Brenner, Ray Gordon, and Judy Blodgett, and our former City Clerk, Tim Spano, also available for questions.
Before I open up to the council, I just want to also acknowledge school committee members Andrew Arnottis, Beverly Griffin Dunn, and Joe Amico, also our attendees where polling locations will be located in our schools. I'll now open it up to councilors for questions or concerns. Councilor Melvin.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Through you to the City Clerk, Allison. Obviously, mid-March, I think I've been talking to you about this, and I really appreciate the effort you've put into it. This is not something that you or your staff have been thinking, just started looking at. You've been looking at it for the last 12, you know, since this whole thing's started. So, thank you for that. Just a couple of questions on, this consolidation is based on those locations. It's not, it's not consolidating based off of a lack of staff for to man the polls. Is that, that's correct?
I think that this helps us with any reductions in staff that we might have. We've reached out to all of our poll workers. A couple were still in the tent, but if we have precincts, same building, and we need to switch from one precinct to another, that will be helpful.
Okay. And, you know, I think, obviously, the poll workers, many of, we know many of them, some of them fall within the age categories that are the most vulnerable to this virus. You know, just a suggestion, I know we've talked about it between the two of us, but just kind of put it out there that if seeing a lack thereof of poll workers, we got to put that out so that they can, you know, we can get people. I'll volunteer, I'm sure most people that, a lot of people want to participate to help out during this time, and I think that this is an opportunity to do so. This election is obviously very important. But, that's just, I'm glad to see that we're getting, we're maximizing as many polling places as possible. I think a lot of communities, if you see they're consolidating to like one or two polling locations, at least this is, it's not, it's not the way we want it. I think we would want to keep it at all of the current polling locations we have, but this is, seems like it's an adapting to a challenging situation. So, I just appreciate your efforts, and I look forward to hearing any other feedback. Thank you.
Councilor Welton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to City Clerk Danforth as well. Just want to, again, acknowledge your hard work. I know that this is a really challenging issue to be, be trying to figure out as we move forward. Just a few questions. This, I assume, is going into effect for the primary, right? This will be all set for the primary?
The primary and the general election, Councilor.
Okay, great, thank you. Then the next question is, or maybe a request, you know, for particularly in Ward 1, where we have a lot of folks that are accustomed to going to St. Anne's, can we ensure that there's signage at any polling locations that would be affected by this consolidation?
Yes. The notification for this change is different than what is usually requested. So, all the city will be required to do is to post it, probably on PATV, and then to also do a reverse 911 call. I don't think it's a bad idea to actually go to St. Anne's and tape something on the door, and to do that to other polling places as well. That's a good idea.
Great, thanks. And just one final question, then I'll yield it to any other councilors. With, again, just to use Ward 1 as an example, with multiple precincts voting in the Brown School Gymnasium, will it be the same check-in area for either precinct, or will that area be split into two check-in zones?
It's going to be, the gymnasium will be print, separated into two check-in zones. Yep, absolutely.
Okay, great.
It's going to be like small precincts. Yep.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you so much, and thank you again for your efforts to ensure that we have voting opportunities in each ward. I know that that's something that many of the councilors felt strong about. So, thank you very much, Allison, for all your, your hard work.
You're welcome, Councilor.
Thank you, Councilor Welton. Councilor Checo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council Welton beat me to the punch. I think it would be a great idea to have some signage at the previous locations, so we will have some people that are used to vote at St. Anne's and other locations throughout the city. And, you know, obviously, you'll do your best to get that information out, but there'll still be people that show up at the old locations. As far as staffing, Allison, and I'm glad we have the school committee here, I was, I was thinking about it today, and I was wondering, just because of the age, the demographic of the age, if maybe the school committee, I don't even know if it's legal, but if there's not going to be school on those days, can we offer those positions to the AP civics classes and AP US history classes at PBD High for those? There's also, you know, a community service requirement at PBD High. Maybe those kids would be interested in, you know, participating in the elections and helping with check-in and sign-out. So, Council Rosignol, at some point, if you open it up to the school committee members, I'd just like to get an answer to that question, is whether that could be done. I think with 18-year-old kids being much safer to have them at the polls. Not that I want to sacrifice them in any way, but the numbers, obviously, are much lower for, for the 18, 17-year-old kids. So, you know, if they'd be willing to do it, I think maybe we could offer it up to them. Just a point of clarification, Allison, when you read out the locations, you said Higgins Middle School Cafeteria. Is that not in play anymore, the cafeteria? So, they'll all be in the gym?
That's correct. It should, should have said gym. It is the gymnasium, we're going to split that into three precincts.
Okay. That's all, that's, I'm happy with the locations. I think you did a tremendous job. You know, and how much work this has been, your first year, and I appreciate everything you've done. So, I think one per ward works for me, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. One more point I just wanted to talk about is the police details. I think that we will still have the same number of police officers, one per precinct, although I think we'll have one in the building, and I think we'll have one in the parking lot. And we'll also have some traffic details out on, say, Central Street for the Senior Center. I think it makes sense to have one out in front of the Brown School. So, I will work with Captain Richards to make sure we have police details at any locations that will be hired to enter exits.
Councilor Shiret.
Thank you, Council President. Through you, through Allison. One of the things I thought about, were there notices going out in the electric bills letting people know of the change of polling places? I know that is very useful in different times. Would you be able to utilize that?
That's a good question. I would ask about, I would have to ask about that. I don't know when the bills go out next.
Should be shortly. If we approve it tonight, I think we, we probably have enough time to get those, that information out to the, if we can do it, to the electric bills.
Good idea, thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman? Through you to Councilor Shiret, that is an excellent idea. The request needs to go from the mayor to PMLP, so you could make that motion to request the mayor to make that request of PMLP. That's an excellent idea.
Sure. So, at this time, and have one other question asked, but make a motion for the mayor to make a request to PMLP, that a notice on the polling places be sent out in the next available bills. So, move.
So, on the motion, just a couple of points of clarification. We cannot vote, so if this is amendable to the council, we cannot vote on this tonight. What we're going to do is we're going to move that the city council evaluates these polling places. It has to be posted for three days, and then we'll vote on it on Thursday. So, with your motion being said that the next available billing cycle, I just don't want that to be anything between now and Thursday, it has to be after the 9th.
Sure. So, I can amend the, the motion to, to, upon approval of the motion for the polling places to be listed in the next available, or available before the election of the primary. So, move.
Heard the motion by Councilor Shiret. Any other further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. President, on the motion?
Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a little technical difficulty there a few moments ago, so if I missed it, have we received the late communication that details these new locations?
No. Allison read those polling locations, but we have not received the late communication. If you'd like to do so prior to Councilor Shiret's motion, that'll be granted.
The motion's already on the floor.
Yeah, I just, yeah. So, maybe, maybe Councilor Shiret can amend his motion to accomplish both.
So, upon approval, amend the motion, upon approval of the late communications and upon the approval of committee to ask the mayor to, ask the PMLP to send a notice of the new approved, approved polling places to all electric bills as soon as, soon as possible. I mean, I don't think we have to get that technical.
You heard the amended motion by Councilor Shiret. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Councilor Welton?
Yes.
Sathla?
Yes.
Betsula?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rosignol?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you, Mr. President. Allison, can you talk a little bit about how the, what the state is doing for the absentee ballots, so we're all clear of that, applications?
Yes, absolutely. So, on July 15th, the Secretary of State is going to be sending out via mail an absentee ballot application to all registered voters in the state. So, for PBD, that's 38,000 registered voters. So, then, applications will go out. We usually get a couple hundred applications. We're going to get thousands of applications. So, thousands of people at least will be voting through absentee ballots. And then also, after that, the state is going to require seven straight days of early voting in August. So, we are going to do seven days of early voting, which will hopefully capture quite a few people as well. So, I don't expect that on September 1st, we're going to be flooded with people to vote. I think a lot of people are going to vote by mail. And then also, after the September 1st primary, the state will again be sending out absentee ballot applications to all of those people who did not check the box to have both the primary and the general election absentee ballots in August. I don't know if I said that correctly. So, they will again be sending them out, and then we're going to have 14 days of continuous early voting in October.
Thank you, Allison.
You're welcome.
And I'm assuming through the chair, and I'm assuming that the, the regular process of counting these absentee ballots is going to continue the same mannerism that we have, and hopefully with more staff?
Well, that's actually going to change. As part of the legislation that they are voting on in the state, they are going to allow us to count absentee and early voting ballots early, which is something we've never been able to do, which is kind of good, because we're going to have so many of them. Instead of bringing them up on Election Day to each precinct, where they're going to have to try to put them through the machine, hopefully, we'll have the vast majority of put through the machine ahead of time. Hopefully. That's the plan.
Curious, that won't be posted, the, the amount of, nothing that's going to be posted until the election day or thereafter, correct?
Thereafter, yes.
Thank you very much, Allison. I appreciate the time and effort with everyone on your, your board there too, and the time they put into this. Sure, no one ever thought they would have to meet and do things like this nature, so I do appreciate everyone, including Tim. I know he's been there, helping you along. And Allison, you're, you're taking, you're taking a lot on the first year, so thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you, Councilor Shiret. Councilman Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the clerk and in advance, the Board of Registrers, for all the work that you're going to have to do. And just to be clear and to start off, is I'm going to support whatever the clerk asks for after, with her experience and all her research, and ultimately, she is responsible for the day, and she's the expert, so I'm going to support whatever, whatever you propose, and support you during that and after that as well. And the Board of Registrers have certainly quite a task ahead of them as well. So, whatever you're putting forward, Allison, I support 100%. The, when I did see the, just a couple comments, when I did see the initial proposal, I really liked it to, I'm, I'm one that would prefer to cut down on the number of locations that we have. I think currently, do we have 14, like regularly, without, well, not this proposal today, but do we have like 14 or 16?
14 polling locations, 19 precincts.
19, yeah, we have 14 polling locations, and I always thought that was kind of excessive. And so, I appreciated taking a look at condensing it to the four units, that we cut down on, on poll workers, that we cut down on police details, which you've already touched upon. And given that we are going into such a financial crisis, that was a positive that I had seen on, in, in your first proposal. But, I understand, as you've explained, a lot of the ward councils prefer to continue to operate voting locations in their wards, and so you've incorporated, you've listened to them, and you've incorporated that. But I, moving forward, those were interesting ideas in your first proposal that I really appreciated. And the, the mail-in locations, there was an excellent article in Yesterday's Globe, I don't know if any of you folks saw it, that gave a very good rundown of the new legislation and Galvin's office with the mail-in and the requirements. And they are very concerned about the clerks' offices, which are, you know, across the state are understaffed. You could have two to three people in an office. They're historically understaffed, and they're going to be inundated with these mail-in, mail-in ballots. And Secretary Galvin's office recognizes that, which you've, you've noted that he's allowing clerks to open the ballots sooner, which helps you, so that you're not completely, you know, annihilated the day of to count them all. So, that's good. So, along those lines, I'm wondering if we've thought at all about maybe some PR out to the public, so that they don't wait until the last minute to fill, because people do. You know, I would wait until the last minute and mail it in. But if we could somehow get word out to the voters, that it would be helpful to the city of PBD and the clerk's office, that they don't wait till the last minute, and that they get those mail-in ballots in early to be counted. I think that's something that maybe we can plan on, maybe along the lines as Councilor Shiret, to get the information out through the electric bill bills, or some other way. Maybe the mayor can send out some robocalls, or we can, you know, do other types of PR, just a food for thought there to help you get those votes in sooner rather than later. I think that will help the Board of Registrers, and certainly your understaffed office. And also, with respect to using, especially continuing to use elementary schools in your second proposal, have we talked about the terminal cleaning that will be required after voting for these voting locations? How that's going to get done, and when, before we open the schools back up, or, or any polling location back up, because you'll have to do terminal cleaning? Has that been discussed?
No, it has not been discussed.
Okay.
I'm sure I can talk to Jim Hasty at Facilities to make sure that there's a plan in place today. When we were, Tim and I were out, we were with Jim Hasty.
Excellent. And I would, I would recommend you talk to Sharon Cameron to go over, you know, the required terminal cleaning. And the only reason I know the name of it is because I worked in a hospital, and we constantly, when we have COVID-19 patients and we move them, anytime you move them from one room to another, you have to terminally clean the, the location where they were. So, having mass amounts of people come into a location, you're going to have to terminally clean the area. So, I'd put that unfortunately on your list of things to do. Maybe Sharon Cameron and Maintenance, as you said, can help you devise that plan.
Yes, Councilor. I actually talked to, a brief conversation with Sharon Cameron, and we are going to get together and discuss that. That is already in the works.
Excellent. And again, I thank you for all you had worked during all of this, as, as my colleagues have, and appreciate everything that you're doing. Any help you need, the council is here for you, and to the Board of Registrers. Good luck on that day. I have the utmost faith in you. You always are top-notch, so thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Councilman Manning Martin. Councilor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say briefly, thank you, Allison, and your team, and everybody involved in making this process. Sounds like it's something that's going to flow fairly well. Councilman Manning Martin, I too saw the article, it was actually Today's Globe about the clerk's office being buried, and really, I've talked to Allison a couple times about this, and the process is, if you could explain the process, Allison. The Secretary of State is going to mail out all ballot requests, and then they, we fill them out and mail it in to you, the city clerk. You then mail out an absentee ballot, am I correct?
Correct. The Secretary of State's office is going to mail out a postcard, actually, to all the registered voters, and they'll just fill out the postcard and have returned postage on it already. So, we'll be getting lots of postcards, which is better than getting lots of big envelopes. And then, once we process those, they'll have a barcode on it with the voter's information. Nothing personal will be written. And then, luckily for us, I talked to Michelle Taffanera at the Secretary of State's office today, and they will have the barcode codes, which we just put into our scanners, but that's, that was huge to find that out today, that we won't have to manually input all of that information. I think the work's going to come with stuffing the envelopes with the ballots. As you know, we have two races in the city with Ted Speliotis retiring, so we have to make sure we get the right ballots and the right envelopes. Seth O'Donnell has committed to getting as much help to get those ballots out as possible, even if it requires taking people out of offices and helping us mail those ballots out. So, we're just, we're just going to do whatever we can to get them in, get them out, and...
So, Allison, when is the Secretary of State mailing out the postcards?
Well, as of tomorrow, they're going to be taking all the information off the state computer, and they're going to be mailing them out starting July 15th. We don't have, we won't have the ballots on July 15th, so probably get them a week or two after that, so we'll be able to mail them out.
That leaves 45 days before the primary, correct? That's, there's a lot of, that's crunch time. Yeah, and primary's September 1.
Yeah, so, 30-day, I don't mean, they're mailing out the 15th. I don't think we'll have the ballots for 15th to mail out. Yeah, we'll have probably about a month to mail them out and get them back.
Wow.
And also have a week of early voting, so...
Wow. Typically, how many people vote in the city?
That's a question for Tim Spano. That's a question for Tim Spanos.
Yeah, Tim.
Let's pull Tim up. I know he wants to be a part of this.
Hi, Tim.
This is Spanos.
Hello.
Hi, Tim. Typically...
Good.
Tim, welcome back.
Thank you.
Tim, typically, how many people vote in the city on a primary, state primary?
State primary, 15, 20%. You know, depending on the races that are there, but I would say 15 to 20%.
And that, that number is what? What is 20% of registered?
20%. Gee, you're making me do my math now.
Well, how many registered are there? 36,000?
7,500, maybe, yeah.
And if 50% of them do mail, we have to turn around 3800 ballots in two weeks or so.
50% vote, that's 18,000.
Good luck, Al.
Thanks, Al.
If we can help. Councilor Manning-Martin and Counselor Shuraz talked about some public service announcements. I think PAT video would be a great thing to do. Maybe even the mayor can get on that video, he's done a few of those, or Allison can get on the video. So that would...
Councilor, I talked to Jim Palmer today about making sure we put something on PATV.
Okay. Just a crazy thought, that pen that people vote with. I know we have to sanitize our pens almost constantly after everybody signs a credit card form. We ought to be in tune to making sure those are clean, or maybe, I don't know how to do it, but that's going to be an issue if we don't pay attention to it. It's just my recommendation.
Councilor, we're thinking of getting disposable pens. People can use it and take it.
Great, great. Thank you. I have no further questions. Good luck, Allison. We're here if you need us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Gold. Any further questions from the counselors? Counselor O'Neill.
Counselor, Mr. President.
I think Counselor McGinn has the floor.
Yeah. Counselor O'Neill, you'll go first, and then Counselor McGinn will be right following.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to echo, echo other counselors' comments about thanking you for the work. There's certainly a lot of moving parts with this process, you know, with the state trying to get a handle on it, and also everyone trying to deal with the pandemic and the situation to make sure everyone can vote, take part in an important process, but also remain healthy, not only the workers, but the actual voters. I'm pleased with the revised polling places. You know, it's a big change for people. We want to continue to encourage people to come out and vote, and I think having at least one voting polling place in a ward is important. I know that I have never voted anywhere in the last 34 years, other than the West Memorial School, so this will be a culture shock for me to go to the Burke School. But, you know, the idea that we're going to have additional mail-in voting, you know, that it's easier for people to do it this year because of the state-proposed state legislation, I think is going to be good. The only thing I would just, I guess, ask once again is echo if you need help in terms of processing those, you know, ballots or, you know, any of that stuff, stuffing, please reach out to us so that, that's just going to, I know you won't know the workflow because we haven't had this kind of inundation of requests, but, you know, please reach out and we'll get you the help you need, okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor.
Thank you, Counselor O'Neill. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the clerk, just kind of reiterate everybody's comments about your hard work on this, Allison, appreciated. With respect to early voting, have those locations been identified?
I have sent a request to the school department to use the Higgins Middle School. I have not received anything back from them yet. I just sent it last week.
So would we, so would the idea be to go from, we have used two locations in the past, correct?
We've used three locations in the past.
Three locations, so being City Hall, the Senior Center, and the third is Higgins?
The West Branch Library.
Okay. So we'd be going from three to one in this scenario? And you think that the Higgins is adequate for going three to one? I mean, with the expansion of the early voting, do you think that's going to be sufficient?
I do. We'll have seven days straight, plus all the absentee.
Yeah. Do you need any, anything from the council with respect to the early voting location? I know you, on the warrant, we sign off on the, on the polling locations for the normal election day, but I don't, I don't recall what the process is for early voting locations.
I don't believe that we have to have you approve the early voting place.
Okay, so there's nothing time-sensitive for the council with, on that piece of it from your perspective?
True, yes.
Right. Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Counselor Sashla.
Thank you, Council President. Just for the record, there is not a polling place in Ward 5, but I'm okay with that. But just, I don't want, there was some thought that there was a polling place in every ward. There is not in Ward 5. Ward 5, the high school is Ward 4, not an issue. I just think, once again, just put the signs up at the church and at the Catholic School to let people know the day of voting especially, and that's all. Thank you. Thanks for all your hard work, Allison.
Thanks, Councilor.
Thank you, Counselor Sashla. Counselor Metzulis.
Thank you, Council President. I also want to congratulate Allison. She's only been here six months, and she's really got on, took that job with a lot on her plate, and she performed like a trooper. She's doing a great job, and I'm proud to say that you're our city clerk, Allison, you're doing a great job. I'm going to, I'm going to, you're welcome. I'm going to support this request because it makes sense. You know, moving Ward 1 and Ward 2 to the Higgins School, Middle School, that makes a lot of sense to me. There's a lot of room there. It's a perfect place to go during this epidemic we're having right now. To move Ward 5 and 6 to PBD Veterans High School, that also makes sense. And for the people in Ward 3 and 4, to move to the, to the PBD to Region Center also makes sense. All of these locations are perfect, as far as I'm concerned. And I'm just, go ahead, the city is working along with the city clerk and doing a great job. I have just one question, Allison. You know, what happens after September 1st and the November 3rd election in 2020? Where do we go from there? Do we revert back to the old voting precincts and location? Are we in limbo? Has that been discussed? Can you answer that question, Allison? Is that something you don't know quite yet, still a little too early?
Yes. Counselor, this plan is for both the September 1st and November 3rd primary and general elections, so that will take us through the year.
That I understand. And then the following year, we go back to our old locations?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Alex. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Turco. Thank you, Counselor Metzulis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counselor Metzulis. Jim, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that we received the late communication, which changed those original three locations that you received in your packet, and those locations were changed for to essentially one for each ward, although the high school is just outside of Ward 5. But the locations are now the Brown School, the Welch School, the Senior Center, the Higgins, the PBD High School, and the Burke School, to essentially encapsulate all six wards.
Gotcha.
All right. So I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to speak again. After I heard Counselor Manning-Martin speak, it just, something struck me from reading the state presentation. And through you to the clerk, Allison, do I, do I have it right that as long as they're postmarked by election day, they can be counted up until the Friday after the election? I believe I read that in the Senate version of the bill. Is that the final say?
Yes, Councilor.
Thank you. So with that being said, so we won't have election results technically, we'll have a good idea of where everybody is, but we wouldn't have final elections, results until that following Friday?
Well, I mean, we'll have results. We'll have the results. If we have to add a few votes here or there, sometimes when we have provisional ballots, they're not put on that night and they're reviewed the next day or the day after and added to the total.
But if you received, you might not receive some of the ballots until Thursday after the election, and they may be postmarked, you know, on that Tuesday, so they're fine to be counted. You know, and as we know, you know, a few votes can sway an election, so we won't have a final result until Friday, a certified result until the Friday after elections. Correct? Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, just for, you know, for the future. Also, Mr. President, through you, if I could grab one of the school committee members, maybe Mr. Amico, if you wouldn't mind? I wanted to ask...
Mrs. Dunn does have her hand up. I was going to go to her once I've heard from the council.
Okay, well, Beverly, if you could remember when you have the floor, Ms. Dunn, the school calendar, I know you guys discussed it a little while ago, and I just don't know what was approved for September 1st primary day, and I believe already election day is off.
I actually, I did see that school committee meeting, they are off, the primary and the general election for both of those days.
Yeah, both days, okay. And then my last question or last suggestion, to the clerk, Mr. President, through you to Allison. Allison, it might be a sore subject right now, but I understand with the budget as it was, they're not using the West and the South Branch libraries. So if the Higgins has issue with early voting at the Higgins, wondering if you could do early voting at the South and the West, being that there's nobody there anyway, just somebody from your staff would have to man it for whatever hours that it needs to be opened. So just a suggestion for you, in case you have an issue with the Higgins.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm prepared to file a motion whenever you're ready to have one.
I just want to state a couple of things, and then I know Ms. Dunn has her hand up. I'd like to offer her a chance to speak. One thing I just wanted to say is, I do think 14 is an exorbitant amount of polling places, and we've narrowed that down to seven, and this is an unprecedented time, and I just want to also commend Allison, I'm sorry, Ms. Danforth, the city clerk, for all of her hard work in this process. This was not taken lightly. This was something that I know she's agonized over for a long time now, and I think she's come to a great resolution that's going to satisfy the needs of our city. And Ms. Danforth, just thank you very much for all of your hard work. I'll now ask Ms. Dunn if she'd like to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ozengal. I appreciate this opportunity. You said it best when you opened meetings, unprecedented times. So I am speaking to reassure all council members, to reassure Ms. Danforth as well as the registrars or voters, that the school department is going to work with you on this. A few meetings ago, we did take a vote to reinforce that we were going to work with you going forward with the election, and now, of course, today, you have some specifics. I can be honest with you, my considerations were about the cleaning of the school, and I can see that that's already being discussed, especially with Mr. Hafey. And as our facility is managed, Mr. Hafey knows the complete protocol from the DESE, and I feel, well, very well assured that things are going to be done properly. School will be in session the day after each of these elections, the primary and the final. So there will be the need for the cleaning of the buildings, and I think that the locations you've chosen are good, just because of the entrance and exit for each of those buildings. It really does consolidate areas of the school that would be used and will be, again, monitored for cleaning. When the school committee voted on this year's calendar and the start of school, the election was a big consideration, and that is why we decided not to have the first day of school on September 1st, because we felt that having the first day of school with the traffic that goes with it, an election with the traffic and confusion that goes with it, and a pandemic, roll all three together, you're asking for trouble. So there won't be any students in the building on the primary day. The final election, normally, we have staff development, and that is something you will probably need to work with Superintendent Vidal, and again, with Mr. Hafey, as far as how the staff would be in the buildings. And honestly, at the moment, I couldn't tell you how they have, but I do have the consideration and a concern. I would like to ask that you bring it forward and speak with Dr. Vidal. The early voting at the Higgins, you know, is directly before the start of school. Normally, we've been using Higgins for our professional development days for the teachers at the beginning of the school year, and that could be a concern because of the number of people in the building, the flow of people back and forth, and also traffic and parking. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. School is not in session, but professional development is, and usually, at some point, it requires all of our staff to be located in one building for a presentation. And I don't know the schedule at the moment, but just make you aware of that. But other than that, I appreciate the thought that's gone into this discussion. I really am impressed, Ms. Danforth, you're doing great. I will say that Tim Spanos knew when to retire. You can't go far, Tim. We know how to get you back.
Timing is everything.
You're right, it really is. But I do wish you well, and I believe that the school committee will be probably discussing this at our next meeting, but right now, I feel very assured with the work you've done, the work you're doing, and the details that you're looking at, make sure that everyone is safe, voters and students and staff as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Ms. Danforth.
Ms. Dunn, I just wanted to let you know that I am working on another plan for early voting. I don't have a commitment yet. I'm hoping to have a response by next week, so I'm trying to take it out of the Higgins, the early voting.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. And I mean, I really just brought it forward as something that most people may not have realized. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing no hands from the attendees as well as the panelists, I would entertain a motion, Counselor Turco.
Mr. President, move that the city council has evaluated and report that changing, the changing of the below-polling locations in the City of PBD will have, will not have a disparate adverse impact on access to the polls on the basis of race, national origin, disability, income, or age, that all proposed locations are accessible, they are maintained in the same ward, they are not far in distance from previous locations, they all meet the required COVID-19 social distancing guidelines for safety. Ward 1, Precinct 1, Brown School Gym. Ward 1, Precinct 2, Brown School Cafeteria. Ward 1, Precinct 3, Brown School Gym. Ward 2, Precinct 1, Welch School Gym. Ward 2, Precinct 2, Welch School Gym. Ward 2, Precinct 3, Welch School Cafeteria. Ward 3, Precinct 1, Senior Santa Jubilee Room. Ward 3, Precinct 2, Senior Santa Jubilee Room. Ward 3, Precinct 3, Senior Santa Jubilee Room. Ward 4, Precinct 1, Higgins Middle School Gym. One, Higgins Middle School Gym, Ward Four Precinct Two, Higgins Middle School Gym, Ward Four Precinct Three, Higgins Middle School Gym, Ward Five Precinct One, PBD High School Fieldhouse, Ward Five Precinct Two, PBD High School Fieldhouse, Ward Five Precinct Three, PBD High School Fieldhouse, Ward Six Precinct One, Burke School Cafeteria, Ward Six Precinct Two, Burke School Gym, Ward Six Precinct Three, Burke School Gym, so moved.
You heard the motion by Counselor Turco. On the motion, Counselor Shuraz.
Do we need to add that, um, Ward, Ward Four Precinct Three A, it stays at the Brooksbury?
Yeah.
Can Counselor Turco add that to his...
Yeah, I'll add, add to the motion, uh, we'll add Ward Four, uh, Precinct Three, it's Three A, correct, Ed?
Right.
Uh, will, will remain unchanged at the, uh, Brooksbury Village.
You heard the motion by Counselor Turco. Any further discussion on the motion? Being none, roll call vote.
Counselor Welton?
Yes.
Saffla?
Yes.
Metzulus?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozengal?
Yes.
Motion carries eleven to zero.
Excellent, thank you very much. So now what will happen is, is this will get posted for three days and then we'll make a final vote on this proposal at next Thursday's, um, regular scheduled City Council meeting. Um, thank you very much, everybody, for attending, thank you very much, um, to the Board of Registers and for Allison, the City Clerk's Office for all of their hard work, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, everybody.
Good night, everyone, have a great holiday.
Standing. Roll call vote.
Counselor Welton?
Yes.
Saffla?
Yes.
Metzulus?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozengal?
Yes.
Motion carries eleven to zero.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Counselor.
Bye, everybody, great to see you all.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.